To order at seven oh seven, seven P M, Madam Clerk, roll call. Councilmember Tucker.
Here.
Councilmember Mendoza.
Here.
Councilmember Obeso Martinez.
Here.
Mayor Protem Algonno.
Here.
Mayor Burnwood.
Here.
Um, can everybody please stand for the floor to be quick.
Recording in progress.
Ready to begin.
I am. Please, Mr. Maria, five of United States America. And to the Republic of America's one issue. And this will be the change of justice.
Mr. Maria, do we have any adjustments?
Tonight's agenda.
Item A, there are no adjustments to the agenda.
We do have one adjustment to pull item E.
Oh, I was gonna make a comment about that, but at, at, at the, uh.
Okay. Okay, perfect. Um, Ms. Turner, do we have any action taken in closed session?
Yes, we do on item B one. Council discussed three items of anticipated litigation and direction was given to council. The council also, uh, discussed conference with real property. Um, and instructions were given to the agency negotiator. That concludes my report. There was no discussion yet of the public employee performance evaluation due to time, so I believe that'll be pushed.
Yeah. Um, moving on to item D, public appearances. D one, madam, matters not appearing on the agenda. If you wish to address the council concerning any item within the council's jurisdiction, please raise your hand and be acknowledged by the mayor. At that time, state your name and address for the record. The mayor reserves a right to place a time limit on each person's presentation of three minutes. It is requested that longer presentations be submitted to council in writing. Do we have any public comments tonight? Did we receive any via email, Madam Clerk?
No, Madam Mayor, we did not.
Okay, thank you. So we'll move on to E, special presentations. Um, E one, recognition of the Imperial High School Girls Varsity Softball Team.
Uh, yes, um, Madam Mayor, un- uh, unlike the ci- city manager, the Imperial High, uh, School, uh, Girls Varsity Softball Team did not drop many balls and they advanced into the state tournament. Uh, and, uh, I, I believe, uh, ultimately lost to the team that made it to the finals of this, of the state tournament. It was the intent of, of this council to recognize them. And so it made its way on the agenda. Uh, but, uh, beyond that, we didn't do what was necessary to get them here. And so m- my intention would be to have certificates prepared and, and provided, uh, to them. Um, and, uh, um, if, if there, if we can get them there, maybe when school gets back in session or something, we'll, we'll talk about that. But in any case, I apologize that, that, uh, that we didn't, uh, accomplish getting them here.
Thank you, moving on to F, consent agenda. All items appearing under consent agenda will be acted upon by the city council in one motion without discussion. Should any council member or other person request that any item be considered separately, that item will be taken up at the time as determined by the mayor. Do I have an emotion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll make the motion.
I have a motion by Tucker and a second by Obeso Martinez, please vote.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you, moving on to G, action items. Um, G one, amend the agreement, amendment to the agreement with Chen Ryan Inc. at the City of Imperial relating to expanding the project scope for S R eighty six improvement project, um, staff report with Mr. Mora.
Madam Mayor, um, this is V I A S from Community Development will be, uh, presenting this item and the next one as well.
Thank you.
Uh, good evening, city council and city staff members. Uh, the, um, item for discussion is the approval of an amendment to the agreement between Chen Ryan and Associates and the City of Imperial. Uh, with regard to expanding the project scope for the, uh, uh, Highway eighty six improvements project. Um, uh, you may be aware, the City of Imperial has been, uh, working with Chen Ryan and Associates on the design of Highway eighty six beautification project. Uh, this is based on an original contract awarded to Chen Ryan on, um, May fifteen twen- the year twenty twenty. Uh, afterwards, uh, the City of Imperial, uh, received funding, uh, from the Affordable Housing and Sustainable Community Program, uh, also known as A H S C, uh, which includes connectivity improvements throughout the city, including Highway eighty six. Uh, the proposed, uh, improvements with this additional funding, um, uh, include the class two base, uh, bike la- uh, bike lanes, sidewalks, crowd walk, landscaping, uh, in, um, various places of the city. Uh, in order to, uh, augment the both projects and increase benefit to the city, uh, stops is propulsion to amend the original contract for design services, uh, for the Highway eighty six beautification project to include this, uh, design for the A H S C grant improvements. Uh, Chen Ryan Associates has provide a cost estimate for engineering design services. Uh, so based on the, uh, benefit to be working with one company to do both project which overlap in, uh, several places, um, what we are doing is proposing to approve of the amendment and get, uh, more benefits, uh, based on the fact that the quote we received from Chen Ryan. It's, uh, reasonable, uh, I, I cannot say cheap, but we can afford it and make more for the community.
Any questions from the council?
Um, where does this start at? Like at fifteenth street or anything that they're gonna do it on this juncture?
That there's an, there's an exhibit, um, um, attached to the gen- item. So it will tell you the, the, the back path and the improvements along Highway the six as well.
Or don't include the roundabouts?
Uh, don't, they don't include the roundabouts, yeah, I.
That's a.
There's, there's not, yeah, there's not enough funding at this moment. Uh, well, we, yeah, it's part of the what they were proposing, what they are proposing. Um, but you know, we, we don't have enough funding at this moment, so we're not gonna be able to make those.
Alright, thank you.
Got a couple of questions. How much was the last time, the last grant that we got from, that we were gonna actually, the last approved amount that we have for Chen Ryan?
Uh, eight hundred fifty thousand dollars.
So eight hundred fifty thousand dollars. Uh, how much of that eight hundred and fifty thousand was spent?
Hmm, I have no, uh, information about that.
I have to take a look at, at that, I don't remember the amount of, of that project. They haven't completed that portion of it, cause there's, there's, uh, an amendment to the circulation and that'll use element as well. Um, uh, but at least the concept part of it, uh, it was completed and, and now we're, uh, we wanna do the design phase for construction.
So, and so now we're gonna go after a two hundred and thirty four thousand.
Correct.
Amendment that we're getting extra, right? Or is that what they're getting?
They are getting.
They are getting, so they're gonna get two hundred and thirty four thousand plus whatever they've gotten already and we're still looking the same.
But this is for the construction now, um, this is not a, this is not for a, a, um, something that will be proposed, not, it's not a proposed, uh.
So.
This is for actual construction, we already have the funding.
For construction, we just wanna complete the, the, uh, the sign and, and just go after construction right away.
Essentially, their first project that we approved was the conceptual design, this'll get us to construction phase, so.
This is the construction phase, yeah, we're at that point, right?
And this is all, and this is all grant funding?
It's, it's grant, mostly it's grant funding, correct.
Much, and so I guess where I'm getting at, last time we approved to go fix those, that little, uh, the bar ditch to, with landscape, uh, using railroad ties, putting trees all along that, was that part of this? Okay, so where are we with that one? So I, I guess my problem with Chen Ryan right now is we've thrown so much money at it and all we get is pictures. That's what I see. I haven't seen any production, anything, I, I understand that this is engineering, but all I see is pictures. We haven't seen any movement and we're gonna throw another three hundred and thirty four thousand dollars for what? Is that gonna build something?
This is to build.
What are they gonna build?
So if you look at the exhibit, um, A, you have, um, it's a.
Exhibit what, A?
A, yes.
Okay.
In page three, you have, uh, bike lanes, you have sidewalks sitting there. Um, have bike racks.
I don't have exhibit A, only have exhibit B.
The A is the, just the map.
That is, yes, correct, this is the one.
Oh, okay.
I'm sorry.
It's a little upside down, sorry.
Uh, let me ask a question, now you're saying this is to build, this isn't actually to build, this is to prepare construction and.
Construction design.
Construction documents so that we can bid.
So that we can build, correct.
There will actually, will actually be coming back to us with a contract to build it.
Contract to build this, yes, B documents, technical specifications, everything.
So when we put it out for the proposal, only got it to like thirty percent design, right? The conceptual model? If that, maybe sixty?
I'll say it's six.
Yeah, okay, so this'll get us other forty percent of the way for this.
But just for this portion of the work, not the whole beautification.
That is correct, no, yeah, that will be, you know, will require millions and millions of dollars to do the roundabouts and, and, you know, property acquisition and whatnot. So we have the funding, we have the, the monies, we just don't have the design and the technical specifications. Um, once we get that, then, uh, we'll move forward with the construction.
Wasn't that the design that they brought last time?
It was not a design, it was, it was conceptual.
We're looking at. Other in here. S R eighty six, fucking the tree.
Well, Highway to six is showing, just not, just not the trace, I mean, it's la- landscape as well.
Yeah.
Um, bike lanes on Berioni sidewalks.
That's the design.
Correct, they're the design engineers only.
This design for two hundred and thirty four is gonna come out of L T A, after they design it and they create the technical specifications, then that will come back to us to go to bid with the A S I C money.
Have any other questions, comments from the council?
Actually, I do, about how long do, I didn't see, how long do they anticipate this to take for the design?
I think two, about three, four months. Yeah, w- we have some, um, work or conceptual work already done. And, well, and this, um, give us an opportunity to actually be more competitive if we want to, uh, look for additional funding. Typically, if you have the project done and there are some additional fundings in like I C T C and some other agencies, if you have the project done and ready for construction, your possibilities are significantly, uh, bigger.
Well, yeah, right now, we're, we're, we're in talks with I C T C, maybe there's some addition of, uh, funding and we can also, you know, we can expand all of this as well.
Is this, I thought, okay, this two hundred and thirty four gets this portion of the work designed.
Correct.
And we have the money to build it.
Correct.
So you're saying you need, you'll have complete documents to get other funding, if we already have the funding.
N- n- no, no, additional funding, say, uh, typically, um, there are some projects that are in just conceptual stage. So right now, if the city is working and completing, uh, certain projects and we have the, uh, the, the base, uh, design, we can actually look for more money showing, okay, this is the, the previous project is under construction, we can increase, say, uh, bike lanes to, to have a better network. And now we have all these with this additional funding, we can do all that, which.
So if we're gonna be, we're using L T A, we're gonna finish the design on this, this area. With A S I C money, we're gonna build this area. So if we use this, having completed a portion of it, to leverage it to get more money, it will come back to us for more design completion, won't it?
For like, yeah, leverage for more money, if, if needed, sometimes if we get money within the project, we don't have to, sometimes it will be just a quick change order for that contractor to do, let's say sidewalks, curb and guiders or whatnot. Sometimes it, that, that's, I mean, will come back to you, of course, but, um, i- i- sometimes that's have to, to, to do an amendment to the contract if it's within. Now, if we get additional funding, um, like he was saying for I, through I C T C, they wanna see the connectivity. So we have construction, we have funds and they wanna see what can, what else can you do? So if we can connect through P Street, we can connect to the county on Worthington and whatnot, so that just, you know, just.
That additional work will come back to us for more design.
Always.
So with the monies we have sitting right now, how much can we do?
What's on exhibit A?
Just the drawing? Or we're gonna build it?
We're gonna build it, yes.
The L T A is gonna pay for the design of this and the A figure is gonna pay for the construction.
Correct.
How much was the?
Total of four million dollars, I believe.
Oh, how did, usually that is, it, it linked into a project, what project?
Oh, I'm sorry, it was linked to the Worthington Square, I mean, the Worthington Apartments, the La Luna ones on Worthington.
Okay.
Yes.
I'll make a motion.
Second. I have a motion by, uh, councilmember Tucker and a second by councilmember Mendoza, uh, please vote.
Motion carries four, one.
Moving on to item G two, laboratory wedding project from Ayton Boulevard to Threshold Road. Bid number two thousand twenty two dash zero four with.
Yeah, I'll present it as well. Uh, yeah, the, uh, the, the item for discussion is to authorize the balancing change order in final contract amount for this, uh, construction and also authorize the payment, uh, of the construction work done, accepting five percent of the amount used for the installation of nine S three lights. Um, uh, you may be aware, the project has been done for probably three months now. It was a challenging project, uh, due to the, uh, connectivity we have with this segment of, uh, laboratory road. So basically, uh, the work has been completed, uh, I would say successfully completed. Uh, the, um, the total amount approved for this project is roughly, uh, two million dollars, two million five hundred sixty, uh, nine thousand dollars. Uh, the project, if you see the, um, the exhibits, uh, we spent, uh, or the inba- the, uh, the work, the, the money used is four million dollars, four hundred fifty seven thousand dollars. Basically, uh, we used, uh, roughly, uh, ninety, uh, nineteen percent additional from the base, uh, uh, quote we got for construction, but this is because we increased significantly. Um, sidewalks, uh, curb and guiders and some other structure we found at the project site that were in desperate conditions. Cause when we start working on the project years ago, those structures were in, I mean, acceptable shape, but once construction began, uh, everything was falling apart. So the decision was taken to improve those areas that eventually would be failing. Uh, having, uh, uh, having done throughout the constructions, hmm, we got really good, uh, prices from the contractor and willingness to, uh, include this additional work. So basically, um, even though with all those additional work, uh, done, uh, there is some, not savings, but, uh, a remaining portion of the approved, uh, contract for over hundred thousand dollars. I would say, uh, the project, uh, was at the end bigger than anticipated and with a really, really reasonable price. If we see the, um, uh, the, uh, the bids, uh, received uh, for the construction, rob- rob engineering was about one million dollar cheaper than, uh, the more, more expensive, uh, company, which is Granite Construction. So that, those prices give us the, the good feeling to actually increase the work done for the construction.
Thank you. Have any questions from the council?
I know I recently asked, since we're closing out the project, our lights on.
Hmm, yes, right now, uh, the, the, the reason to have those lights energized is because when we, uh, get in contact with, um, I I D to request, uh, that service, they gave us a, a brand new detail for labeling the, uh, the, the light bulbs. So basically, we already did the, um, or, or did the purchase, but the waiting time to receive those labels are like crazy, like six, eight weeks, for whatever reason, I don't know. So basically, the, um, the C S P with I D has been paid pending just receiving the labels. Uh, we're working, uh, with the public services to actually get them faster, install them. Once that is done, it's going to be energized, we are in connection with, um, the I I D power, uh, division. And once they do it, we can do the final walkthrough, I mean, all the structures, all the work done has been inspected and some correction, minor correction were done. So once it's that done, we are going to accept the, uh, the, the project. This is in, in a, in a different, uh, session and then we can request authorization to file the notice of completion.
I mean, heaviness, what's the label for, what exactly is that?
It's numbers, that's the way they, the, uh, I I D gives track of the light bulbs, there's, there's a ser- a serial number.
Ah, okay.
That's what.
So they can count.
Yeah, and it was a, it was a new requirement, they completed everything and we were ready to go and at, uh, we received, uh, an email from them and saying, oh, you need to, um, i- in, install these labels and now, uh, at your cost. Uh, before they used, we will send the request and they will put the labels for us, but not anymore, so that's, that's why there's been a delay in, in closing out the project. Um, and that's where we at, so we're just waiting for the labels, put them on and then.
Still for, for, uh, six to eight weeks now?
We're within those six to eight weeks now, we, we received partial numbers, um, Monday, I believe. Yes, so we only received a, a box of them, so.
So I I D labels, so in case the lights go out, they go out and replace them, correct? Or do we do that?
We, we do it, we'll, we'll, we're gonna do it, so now, uh, uh, we gave Jackie the specifications, we're not, we're gonna order a lot more, uh, just to be safe.
If this, if the labels are holding up the closeout of. If this, if the labels are holding up the closeout of the project, are we gonna have any problem with the contractor? I, we can't release their retention till thirty days after the notice of completion. And now we're holding that because of these labels is.
Uh yeah, we haven't had any um uh, but we had a meeting with 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 them. Uh and we explaining what we're doing right now, so we're gonna release the most of the monies that in 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 balancing shoulder as well. So they're okay with it, they're very, they're aware of the situation, so hopefully we get it done by the next meeting, we'll close it.
Why does I A D have to label these poles if they?
They don't have anything to do with it.
Um in order to them, them to energize. Get power without that.
If this can hold up the notice.
Right, and I I thought, I think that's what we're doing right now.
No, it says in here that we are um accepting the five percent, you know, we're paying out except. But if it continues to hold up the project, can we reduce that retention down to like two percent? So we can, I mean, the only, we're holding them up, if they, if we're accepting their work and they're done. I hate the idea that we're holding up a large amount of mon- money to this contractor. Because some, there's only one manufacturer in the state or the country.
Eh and it it in, yeah, it it's only five percent for the the light bulbs, not the project.
Right, but yeah, but you're right, I mean, if we don't get the labels, even if it's just five percent of the small amount, um. We may have the ability and we'll have to confirm with ci- uh city attorney, uh if we can do so.
We we can work that out, eh but it, right now it's not on paper, so um if if you can just add that to your motion. That you direct the, you know, city manager to authorize it within the the scope of the law and his judgment.
I'll I'll leave that up to discussion, I I just, I know on my projects, I've had it happen before. Whereas something is taking a while to, and it's holding up that notice of completion, they'll reduce the retention down to like two percent. So that we're only holding a minimum amount.
It's another I A D thing that held us up again. But God forbid it's their stuff, they're knocking on your door, wanting it done now. Just saying.
If it was easy, it wouldn't be I A D.
Oh, oh yeah. And I bet you they have labels sitting in back, sitting in a bucket. Saying. They label their trucks, they label all their stuff with them. But it's just, the the problem with this is that last time we waited for their encroachment permit almost an entire year. Which increased our construction costs tremendously. Not un- until after we had a conversation with one of the board members that we received an encroachment permit thirty days later. Now we're being held up with a new thing that they have with signs and signage on power poles and. We can go around developments and I guarantee you, there is no signage on some of these poles. That's my problem, it's not you guys, it's it's just the process that that is put in front of us. They're probably watching and it is what it is. Yes, sir.
Mayor and council, uh council member Mendoza, you raise a good point. I know that all of the departments have been working with the city attorney on that very issue to make sure that we don't. Put ourselves in a bad position with respect to notices of completion, recording of the notice of completion. And and facing potential uh in- interest payments. Uh in my conversation with staff about the very issue here. Uh they're ve- they're very comfortable that even the minimum amount of the retention. In the, uh we're confident that the lights are gonna go on when they're energized because they did all the inspections as they were being installed. Uh so the amount of the retention is a practical matter in this case. Uh is minimal and even we think that minimal amount would would protect the city. In the ca- in the unlikely event that something were to happen at the point in time they were energized. But you raise a very good point and that's always a concern in terms of de- uh delay in payment.
Appreciate the hard work, so.
Do I have a motion?
I'll second.
And just uh for that's uh one and two.
Yes.
I have a motion and a second, please vote.
Motion passes for one abstention.
Moving on to item G three, fiscal year two thousand twenty one, Stone Garden Memorandum of Understanding with Chief Crankshaw.
Good evening, uh Madam Mayor, members of the council and staff. This is a uh Operation Stone Garden, it's a reoccurring uh federal grant. Working with our federal law enforcement partners. Um this grant outlines uh both operational cost and equipment. The uh to include uh on the operations that we would uh work major corridors. In and around the city uh for narcotic and human trafficking uh activities and and. So uh it's been a long uh partnership with uh. Uh in this case, uh ICE and and U S B P. Um it has uh been very fruitful in regards to equipment that sometimes we can't uh normally get through our. A regular uh budgeting process. So as you can see, it's way back at twenty twenty one, but that's kinda how it works with them. So uh. I'd stand for any questions that you may have in regards to this.
Questions? The motion by Tucker and second by Alperano, please vote.
Motion passes five zero.
Item G four, resource officer agreement for school year two thousand twenty three to twenty four with Chief Crankshaw.
Thank you. Um and this uh, we had an opportunity, we looked through the current uh M O U's, uh it's in. It's reoccurring, obviously, on a annual fiscal basis. We did some cleanup on language uh to be more direct uh of how the usage of our partnership is. With the the standard agreement we have with the Imperial High School School District. This uh M O U was approved last week through the school board and it's uh, there was no significant changes um. And uh there was uh. It was something that was, that we thought would uh speak more cleanly to the partnership, so. Again, I will stand for any questions that you may have in regards to that.
Questions or comments, motions?
I know there was talk about getting another one or having two total or, I'm just not sure, I didn't, wasn't in on the conversation.
Yes, I did speak with the superintendent in regards to that, um and we're certainly open to that, I mean. A second school resource officer certainly uh would assist in some of the activities that go on. I will say that the 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 person we have assigned over there right now is doing a really good job. And it's being offset by our patrol teams during those hours of some of the busier times, both uh in the morning and afternoon. Um it really hasn't come to fruition as far as uh with the funding. Um and it hasn't, the superintendent hasn't brought it forward to me to as a discussion topic. But it would be certainly something that we'd be um open to. Eh if that's something that the, obviously the city would be as well. So but as of for this upcoming fiscal year, it wasn't approached, so. Um it might be something we can look at for the upcoming year after that.
Thank you. Then I'll make a motion.
I have a motion by Tucker and a second by Alperano, please vote.
Motion passes five zero.
Moving on to item H, um H one, department reports, do any of my departments have any reports? Yes, that's why I looked at it first.
So uh Madam Mayor, members of the council, uh I wanna invite uh you guys as well as the community to attend our Friday night. Dive dive in movie at the pool. Uh from seven to ten, the pool will be open as well as we will be paying uh Moana. For uh pu- uh pool movie, so come join us. And on another note, I'm glad uh Deputy Duck gave us our money yesterday, in case they're watching today's meeting.
Now that check might bounce. Do you have any other reports? Seeing none, we'll move on to city manager reports, Mr. Marita, Ms. Brown. So moving on to mayor and council member reports, I'll start, does any of my council have reports?
Nothing from me.
Appreciate the cleanup the other day on Long Highway eighty six, it was nice to see, so thanks.
I will say that my kids are loving summer programs, like I mentioned, uh. I should have left them home and to get bored for a week, so they'd appreciate, you know, cuz they, the quote was, all we do is play games and do crafts. Which sounds, you know, terrible, so, but they are enjoying them and all the kids seem to be having really fun, so. Kudos to our Parks and Recs Department on that, um and yeah. That's all I have to report, so with that, I'll move on to the adjournment of this regular meeting of city council until the next regularly scheduled meeting. Wednesday, July fifth at seven P M. And I adjourn this meeting at seven forty one.